Good morning and welcome to the December 31st County Commission meeting. We'll stand for the pledge in a second, but before we say the pledge, I'd like to stand in for a moment of silence. We've had six county employees this year who have passed away, and I'd like to remember them, their families, and their service to the county for a silent moment, if you will. So if you'd please stand before the pledge of allegiance. I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and again, welcome to the last meeting in December and of 2013, and I hope that everyone has a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year. Remind everyone to silence their cell phones and the meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly, and if you need a listening device, Robert will help you with that. We have a special guest this morning. Alexis is here to keep her aunt in line, so welcome. She's a student council member or hopes to be.
Yes, she is a student council member at Cleveland.
She is. So we're going to get her started real young. So welcome this morning, Alexis. With that, we will start with routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any corrections or changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of December 24th, 2013.
We have the county commission minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those from 12/24. Any corrections or changes? With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $521,460.61.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the bills. Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
Well, first, I'd like to say there's $127,000 for the Baltic Bridge project in these bills, but there's also a number of significant bills for medical payments this month, including some tens of thousands, and I guess I've asked Carol if she would make a comment on them. That department does a great job of making sure that it's appropriate when we pay those bills, but we get, as we all know, we're billed tens of millions of dollars by the hospitals, and Carol does a great job of working on that.
Morning, Carol.
Morning. Carol Muller, Department of Human Services, and I would give credit to staff who does a great job on doing that. Yes, on a yearly basis, we receive, Minnehaha County receives between $3,000 and $3,800 worth of notices a year from the hospitals, the majority of which come from the Sioux Falls hospitals, although we do have some that come from different hospitals because we have people out traveling or that we still have responsibility for. And we, and those bills, full shelf price are anywhere between 30 and 40 million dollars a year, and as a general rule of thumb, we spend less than a million dollars a year on those bills. But yes, we do. We do work through, there's, all of us is in state law and in administrative rules and in what we lovingly call the ability to pay form that we go through and work for. But yes, we do. We have about $129,000 worth of medical bills that are going through at this particular point. Some of, I know at least one of those bills goes back to, I believe, 2008 by the time that's been settled.
Questions for Carol? Is there a general, quote, lag time for those bills to be paid?
No. You know, it just depends upon a variety of things that are out there. Generally, we try, we'd like to get them settled within the year, but sometimes if people don't get stuff to us, sometimes if it goes into, they need to show up for depositions or whatever it is that's out there, it takes a little bit longer period of time before things get done. So I would say as a general rule of thumb, they're within, most of them are within 12 to 24 months.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Carol or about the bills? We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item, there are no reports today. Item five is personnel actions. A is a motion to approve the personnel actions.
Is there a motion?
I'll move personnel.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the personnel actions. Any questions or comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
There are no applications for abatement today, and there are no notices and requests or planning and zoning notices. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecas.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number, well, let's see, we don't have a D, oh, 40752, in the amount of $925.02. The auditor's office received a request to compromise a lien. It was actually submitted by the applicant's attorney, Mr. Paul Lindy. There's no real estate involved with this particular request. However, there was invoice, of course, that was issued to the applicant for various services, including a recent public defender service in the amount of $100.80. It was filed back in July of this year. The total balance now of the lien is $925.02. This represents not only the most recent lien, but also for poor relief in court-appointed attorneys that date all the way back to 1999. So the original balance of the lien was $1,295.02. There have been minor payments that have been made of $370, bringing the total balance to a reduced sum of $925.02. The applicant unfortunately is unemployed. She stated that her only income is $430 per month of child support. She is currently seeking employment. She has assets of $16,150, consisting primarily of her 2008 vehicle, and liabilities of $69,000, consisting of the vehicle loan and also student loans. The applicant is requesting a release of the lien and full payment of $200. In conversations, of course, with her counsel, this was a situation where she would like to resolve this as soon as possible with the offer that was submitted by her of the $200. With her little income and non-employment, she has little ability to make payment at this time. Now, the one thing that is missing, though, is that we never did receive her most recent tax return. So if we were to accept the $200, she would have paid a gross amount of $570. For a lien that grossed $1,295, this is well below the precedent that we've accepted for 50 cents on the dollar. So I will reluctantly make this motion, but I wouldn't be surprised if I didn't get a second.
Well, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments? Commissioner Hyburger?
I have several questions on the document from the lawyer dated October 8th. There was an $800 cash payment offered, and I didn't see 200 offered anywhere else in it. And then there's also another letter in here somewhere that talks about the possibility of two people with the same name, and I'm wondering if that was resolved? That was resolved? Do you know what, how that was resolved between the 200 and 300? Because it's October 8th, but her states 300.
Correct. The October 8th letter did state $300, and, but, and there was a dispute whether or not this was the right person, but we were able to go back and verify based on some of the last four of the socials on some other documents that this was, in fact, the person we were working with. And so, and again, once they made the letter, we had submitted a request for compromise of lien, didn't get any material back, and then on this until subsequently, we got the second letter with the attached compromise. So.
I guess I still have concerns about, like John said, this is not a complete document. The other thing is this person is educated, maybe doesn't have a job right now, but there's no real estate attached to this lien. I don't understand, I mean, they obviously have a private lawyer and no real estate attached.
The attorney, and we did confirm that because that was a question that came up for us as well, the attorney is doing the work pro bono.
Commissioner Kelly?
Ken, is this turned over to collection or is, I mean, if we don't, if we don't take any action on this and she can continue to make payments?
It was turned over, it was turned over back in '08 after, when the lien balance was quite small, and in our initial contact with Hoggie, they have not, they have not been able to make contact, nor have they pursued anything on this lien recently.
How, I didn't, I've got it in front of me, but what, when was the last payment, partial payment made?
The last partial payment actually came in 2003.
Ten years ago.
There was a public defender charge of $110 at that time, and she paid it off in full at that time, that particular charge of $110. So that was the last payment that was received.
Well, I guess I, if I may, I agree with Cindy that, I mean, she, with the unemployment rate in Sioux Falls area and the fact that she spent $50,000 of student loans, so she must have some education credentials to take in, I don't think, I think we can wait. We're patient, we've always been patient with even small payments, and that she does get a job, she's still got an obligation to pay, and we just aren't going to take her house or anything like that, so I'd rather, I will not support this.
Any other comments? No other comments? We do have a motion and a second to approve the compromise, I believe. I think we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hyburger?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Pecas?
No.
Bennigan?
No. Motion fails four to one. This is the time for public comment on any item that is not on the agenda. Does anyone have any comments? No one's moving, so we'll go to item, no, we won't either. We'll go to item 11.
Item 11, consider a motion to supplement $111,167.36 from the emergency management fund to the emergency management budget representing reimbursements from various federal and state grants. Lindy Young.
Commissioners, Lindy Young, Emergency Management. This is just a year-end supplement to get all the grant funds back into the budget so we end up equal and keep the auditor's office happy with us. So included in the memo is the items that you typically receive when we request a supplement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Make a motion to supplement that, the emergency management with $111,167.36.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone else have any questions of Lynn? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Item 12 is consider a motion to supplement $199,866.92 from the general fund to the sheriff and jail budget representing reimbursements from various federal and state grants and private donations. Kristin Trana.
Good morning. Kristin Trana with the sheriff's office. I'm bringing to you, very similar to what Lynn just did, just a clean of the budget and those ASNs that we use for our grants to be able to get them back in line as far as, so there's different ones to overtime, both in the sheriff's office and the jail, the Haida grant, the TLS range maintenance, Explorer donations, state drug funds, school resource program donations, domestic violence grant, the U.S. Marshal Service grant, the JTTF travel, and then also some safety rescue equipment, which is interdepartmental vehicle equipment, and then the SCAP grant, and then several supplements to our burn J grants for interest, and then also new awards.
Make a motion to do that supplement to the sheriff and jail.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions of Kristin? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
If you'd have talked a little slower, we could have gone back to the item number 10. Either that or I can waste the next minute talking about it.
Shall we move on?
I think we have to.
Okay. Item 13 is a briefing on proposals submitted in response to the request for proposals for providing inmate medical and clinically managed residential detoxification services. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, we issued a request for proposals for inmate medical and detox services back in late October of 2013. Those proposals were due to be received in the commission office by December 6th. We received five proposals in response to our RFP. As you know, the current contract with our provider, Correct Care Solutions, expires at the end of February of this year. The five, the following firms submitted a proposal, and I will note that our current provider, Correct Care Solutions, did not submit a proposal. We received proposals from Advanced Correctional Health Care out of Peoria, Illinois, Armor Correctional Health out of Miami, Florida, Correctional Healthcare Companies out of Greenwood Village, Colorado, Wexford Health Source out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and Quality Choice Correctional Health Care out of New Rochelle, New York. All five of those proposals have been reviewed by a committee consisting of Sheriff Milstead, Chief Deputy Michelle Boyd, Worden Jeff Grover, Carol Muller, myself, and then our consultant that we've utilized for inmate medical and detox services in the past, Rick Morris. We have looked carefully at all of those proposals to see if they met the requirements that were based in the RFP and based on the completeness of the proposals submitted, the, whether or not they were interested in providing services for both detox and for inmate medical. We have narrowed those proposals down to two that we are recommending that we go forward with, with interview purposes. And those two firms that we're recommending, that we interview, are Armor Correctional Healthcare and Correctional Healthcare Companies. And in fact, we have interviews scheduled with those two companies for Monday, January 6th. So it's our intent to conduct those interviews on the 6th of January. I'm sure there will be some more site visitations with the folks and that'll want to see our operations, and it is our intent then to come to you by January 14th in order to make a recommendation for a contract award so we can get the contract in place prior to the expiration of the current provider's contract. I've given you some information concerning some of the anticipated costs, and I want to remind you that those are not negotiated at this point. These are for reference purposes. As we enter into the negotiation and the interview process, they are not the negotiated contract price, and, but you will note that they're fairly close to what we anticipate spending in total in the 2013 budget, and that, so if you have any questions, all the members of the review committee team are here, and I think we're all confident that we're going to find a good quality provider and that at the end of our interview process on the 6th, so.
Thank you, Ken. So you want to have any questions again? Commissioner Kelly?
Ken, what are the pass-through costs?
The pass-through costs are those things that include things like pharmacy, off-site medical, those kind of costs, and that you pay for them as they come up, basically, and as you go. And based upon where we think we're going to end the 2013 year with those pass-through costs, that's how we're determining those as we look forward into what we potentially will spend in 2014. The costs above for the personnel, the management fees, et cetera, and that, those are pretty much an apples-to-apples comparison based on the staffing matrix that's been developed as we move forward for the new concept for both the detox and for the infirmary sobering center concept.
Wait a minute, I lost my train of thought. Oh, what, historically, what have these passed through the last couple, three years? Have they been around that?
Again, the pass-through cost for the jail, we're anticipating, that's based upon the most recent where we're looking at for 2013, and that, the one for detox, we had to readjust that a little bit simply because in our projected new model, we are going to have less number of beds for the detox than what we operate now, so we've had to skinny that cost down a little bit. So that is an estimate at this time.
We've had significant cost, if I may, cost overruns on the detox this year. Are most of those been personnel costs, and are they reflected then up above?
And that, the majority of the costs in detox for that overrun were, yes, the two components. And that, one, of course, is the 2.7 FTEs that were authorized that were not included in the original 2013 budget, and the, secondly, would be other costs associated with, again, the pass-through costs, legal fees, et cetera.
Any other questions, Ken? Do any of the committee members want to make any comments? Just grin. That's good. This is a briefing, so we'll just move to, back to item number 10 if there's not any questions. Darlene, thanks for your patience.
Item 10 is a public hearing to consider a supplement of $416,780 from the general fund to various county department and agency budgets, and a supplement of $169,669 from the highway fund to the highway budget. Darlene Johnson.
Good afternoon, or good morning, I guess. I wanted afternoon, apparently. Darlene Johnson from the auditor's office. On the 17th of December, the commission authorized the auditor to post notice of this budget hearing that we're holding today. Also, on the 17th, you authorize five departments to use savings in their personnel budgets to cover other expenditures, so additional supplements were not necessary, and those departments are the auditor's office, facilities, public defender, sheriff, and jail. Also, we discussed or presented to you some information on the 17th that other departments will have sufficient savings in their personnel budgets to more than cover the amount of our supplements that are requested. The eight general fund supplements requested total $416,780, and the highway fund supplement requested is $169,669. The supplements include the commission office, and the amount is $35,130. The court systems, $225,000. The state's attorney's office, $40,000. Public advocate, $3,000. Facilities, $38,500. County insurance, $10,000. The Minnehaha County Economic Development, $150, and the sheriff's office, $65,000. In the highway fund, we're supplementing or requesting that we supplement that in the amount of $169,669.
Thank you, Darlene. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Oh, I have one, Ken. You better keep Darlene up there, you may need her. In round numbers, Ken, our original approved budget for 2013, the supplements we passed during the year, and then these supplements, what's the bottom line? Is there, I know we took a lot of personnel savings and moved them over to operational. I guess I'm just trying to get a handle on how it came out overall.
Sure.
Well, the total budget, including all past supplements, and that for 2013, you know, and again, those supplements are, were primarily grant-related and other things, but that budget was $69,339,599, and that, with the, I'm sorry, $69,339,599, and that, and that's with all other supplements that were done throughout the course of the year from the original budget. And that, with these supplements that you are looking at now, particularly in the general fund, the $416,780, that is well within the personnel savings of those approved budgets, and that, so that this should have no impact on our general fund cash as we move forward because that's all accounted for in our total numbers as we move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Again, I think it's ironic to note that we've talked about this before, but public safety is a continuous issue for us, but in this particular case, as we close out the year, it's the other side of that, the legal side, if you will, with court systems, state's attorney and public advocates office, that's well over two-thirds of the amount that we're looking at, and obviously, we can't do anything about cost of fuel and energy issues, so to be this close on a $69 million budget is an incredible accolade to the staff and to the people who work on these budgets daily, so, and to the sheriff's department who return money. We're making sure that you hear that again. Thank you.
[laughing]
Any other comments? If not, we, this is a public hearing, but we.
Does anyone want to speak?
Yeah, if anyone wants to speak in reference to that conversation, we'd be happy to hear from them. You're all sitting there like, thank God it's over, right?
So are we.
No comments? And we look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to supplement the budgets.
Thank you. A motion and a second to supplement the budget for 2013 as previously discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Darlene, and Ken, and everyone else.
The next item is item 14, authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 lease agreement between court-appointed special advocate and Minnehaha County. Ken McFarland.
As we close the year, and that, I realize there was one agreement that we have that we need to put into place before we start the new year, and that is our lease agreement with the court-appointed special advocate. As you know, the court-appointed special advocate program, or CASA as it's known, is leases 1,500 square feet of office space right across the street from us in the first floor of the county, of the old county extension building. Under the terms of this particular agreement, we would continue that lease with CASA under the same terms and conditions as we had for 2013. They make quarterly pay, the total lease payment is $7,000, and they pay us that quarterly throughout the, throughout the year. Under the terms of the agreement, we also pay for the heat and electricity and janitorial services, which is included in the total building budget over there, along with some 4H activities that are also as part of that building, and that, and we also direct where the employees of CASA park. CASA pays for their own phone bills and has access to the conference rooms in the building, and they're responsible for maintaining their own workers' comp insurance and other coverages for their operation. Again, this is, this is the second year of the agreement that we've had them over at the extension building, and their request is to continue under the same terms and conditions as 2013. Amy Bender, the director of CASA, is here if you have any questions of her, but we would recommend approval of the agreement.
Thank you, Ken. Amy, would you like to make any comments?
Actually, it's my third.
We're all in third here.
We welcome. Thank you very much for being here. It's great for us to be right close to the courthouse. It's great to have all of this.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the lease with CASA. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Thompson Reuters for Westlaw Pro subscription service. Sarah Shaw.
Thank you, commissioners. I apologize we're bringing this so late. The state's attorney's office has been in negotiations with Thompson Reuters. We started looking at our Westlaw pricing. Originally, the state's attorney's office and public advocate's office had been together, and we were all under the same contract, but we came to find out that because we had so many attorneys, it was jumping us up into a new pricing bracket, and so what happened is, we still are set for a three-year contract. We still have a year left on our contract. If we did nothing, our current price would jump 5%, which is typical, it goes up 5% every year. We'd go up to $2,287 per month. If we split off from the public advocate's office, meaning we'd keep 25 attorneys with the state's attorney's office and public advocate's office, which I, my understanding the state's attorney's office and public advocates office, which I, my understanding is they have signed a contract to split off, what would happen is, is the total that the county would pay overall is 20, $2,150.05 per month. So it's a $50 a month savings just to split. I got to looking at those numbers, and I asked Mr. McGowan if I could go in and, and speak with Lexus, who's their competitor. For the last three weeks or so, I've been working with Lexus and seeing what kind of pricing I could get from them. I ended up pitting the two a little bit against each other, and we ended up with a much lower bid at this point. Lexus came in at $1,553 per month with a 500, or 5% increase. So we ended up actually having savings of nearly $250 a month by just seeking other bids and, and looking to get a, a little bit cheaper price. And so I, I asked that the commission approve this contract with a much lower price than what we were originally looking at.
Commissioner Heiberg.
I just make a motion and a comment, and make a motion to approve and to thank Sarah very much for going out and looking for additional bids instead of just passing on, which looks like a good deal. Sorry, I made a motion before anybody seconded it.
Start with.
Second with the comment also. Go ahead. Well, I, you know, I still think that there ought to be a way for us, it's, it's odd to me that by having more lawyers involved, the price goes up. Maybe that's not odd. But if I buy 50 pounds of hamburger, I pay a lower rate than I buy one. And so it just seems to me that if you have more lawyers, the price per lawyer ought to go down. And we still have the, the public defender, you know, with, with a separate contract. And, you know, even in today's bills, there was an $80 bill to West for the register of deeds. I mean, I, I don't even know all the ways that we, we are paying West Law and West. But I, I certainly support your efforts on this, and thank you.
If I may make one comment, Commissioner.
Absolutely.
For Mr. Barth, I, I, in talking with Westlaw, the other reason we chose to split off is because as the software expands and as we possibly get new software, one of the issues that comes up with is if you're all on the same contract, sometimes you can have access to each other's research and things like that. And, and in the software, you can have access to certain files. And because the public advocate and the state's attorneys need to stay completely separate, that was the other reason we did choose to split from the public advocate.
That makes a lot sense.
So for that conflict possibly arising in the future.
Any other comments? If not, I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner liaison reports.
Does anyone have a liaison report this morning? Evidently not. Anybody have any new business conversations? Mr. McFarland.
Commissioners, I hope you remember, I hope you remember when I told you that the commissioner's contingency fund exists primarily to handle any last-minute supplements that might be necessary to department budgets as we close the, the end of the year. And the reason that the commission contingency is so important is because since it's already a budgeted line item for, within the 2013 budget, you don't have to do the notice provisions and that, that are required when you do a supplement, because these aren't really supplements. You are transferring money from the, an already budgeted amount from the commissioner's contingency fund and transferring those funds to another department. As we close the year, and as we're looking at, at bills that we see coming in, there are two budgets that we think we're going to need to supplement from the contingency fund. And so the first one we would ask you to consider approving is a transfer of $5,000 from the commissioner's contingency fund to the public advocates budget. And this is primarily for some unanticipated site devaluation bills that have come into the pipeline that will push her over, and that does need to be accounted for in the 2013 year. So we would respectfully request a transfer of 5,000 from the contingency fund to ASN 15834, Other Professional Services, in the 2013 public advocate budget.
Anyone have any questions, Ken?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to transfer the $5,000 from the contingency fund to the public advocate budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
The second one, there is now 15,000 left in the commissioner's contingency fund, and we would ask for a motion to authorize the transfer of that 15,000 from the contingency fund to the facilities budget, ASN 16169, which is the natural gas budget. And that's to take care of some higher-than-anticipated cost in the natural gas line item as we close out these books, and we anticipate that 15,000 should be just right, the right amount in order to close out the facilities budget for 2013. And Lloyd is here if there's any questions that you might have, but we would ask for that motion.
Any questions in, from commissioners about that conversation?
Make a motion to approve that. Second.
Lloyd, do you have any comments? I have a motion and a second to approve that transfer of, is it $3,000?
It's 15.
15.
That's for the two, isn't it? I only get a part of that email. That's okay.
There should be two separate ones.
Gotcha.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve that $15,000 transfer for the gas bill. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
And again, thank you for your consideration and patience on that, commissioners. This just highlights the importance of the commissioner's contingency fund and why sometimes we get a little protective of it for year end.
But wasn't this, man, wasn't this something to be expected? I mean, I know that the utility company went back and, and of course, they raised their rates. And so this was something that although we asked Lloyd to look into the crystal ball and make a great prediction, just like with any given prediction, it's subject to the whims of what happens with pricing. Isn't that kind of correct?
That's correct. The other, my name is Lloyd Olson, the facilities department. The other thing is, is we've had an unusually cold December, and that's caused a number of things, higher consumption, and it causes the natural gas rates to go up because of the cold weather throughout the United States, and it is a traded commodity.
Lloyd, if I might, do you know what the Public Utilities Commission approved for rate increases for utility companies?
They do not control for the natural gas.
Oh, but on the other ones?
On the, on the electricity. If I remember correctly, they approved for 2014 like an 8% increase. I would have to look back to see what that was that was approved for XL Energy.
I remember that conversation during the budget hearings, and I don't think that we used eight, if I remember right. So you did a heck of a job coming that close, frankly, so thank you.
Well, it's, a lot of it has to do with weather and how we operate certain pieces of equipment for the cooling, especially in the summertime.
Any other comments? Thanks, Lloyd.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just comment that, you know, that costs us in human services as well when we.
Oh, yes.
Pay the electric bills for those that fall behind. And the maximum we will pay is $420. But over the summer, looking at those $420 increments, they were triple what they used to be.
You're absolutely right. Thank you for the comment. Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any old business?
Did we vote?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, I have some old business. I got lost somewhere in this conversation.
Do you have some old business?
Yes, I do.
It's from Dick, it's old.
You know, Commissioner Barth's been sending us a lot of documentation on alcohol, taxes, consumption, and a lot of the problems, and I think we were all there for the, for the presentation by the father of that girl that was killed in Chamberlain. And I, I really believe that, that we need to keep, next year, we need to start keeping some pressure on our legislators to either relook at all the alcoholic beverage tax laws. These were written back in the, was it the early 90s, Jeff, or?
Late 80s.
80s. You know, a lot of things have changed since then, and, and obviously, our public safety costs have continued to rise and rise and rise. And, you know, there's a lot of options we can go through. I mean, you can go through anything from, there's a 2% excise tax that was enacted in 1996, I believe, on, on the wholesalers. That money all goes to the state. Of the, of the alcoholic beverage taxes, 50% goes to the state, I'm sorry, 75 goes to the state, and 25 goes to the cities. County gets nothing out of that. And I really, but, you know, so many of the, of the city deals that are being done, the, sobriety checks and everything else are funded through Homeland Security, but we're left, we're left as soon as they get done of prosecuting, defending, incarcerating, the whole works. And another possibility, rather than raise taxes, is simply to allow us to get 20, to get half of that 25%. But I, I think when, when you consider that 50% of the alcohol is consumed by 5% of the, am I right on my numbers, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
For 5% of the, of the drinkers, that 35% of people don't drink, and those, right now, those people are all paying through the property taxes. And if you believe in a user pays thing, you can certainly make a strong case, I think, for, for, for another tax on, like a luxury tax or a liquor tax at the retail level. You got to buy the liquor to get drunk. I don't think anybody's got many home, home breweries, but I, I think that, that's where the payments for these, these increased costs ought to come out of. And I think if we just continue to keep on this, I know the county commission, the state, the association is not, you know, they're skeptical, they're scared. One of the problems we run into there is that there's a feeling in Sioux Falls, I'll get all the money. Well, guess what? You know, where's all the money being spent? And, and so I would just encourage this commission to, to keep this on, in the, in the conversations and work towards perhaps relieving some of the pressure that we're getting from the public safety. If, if the statistics I've seen, and you could see a significant drop in public safety costs because you, you've taxed it, or we could, or the cost that, you know, we could take that money and move it to property tax relief. If we got $2 million a year, for instance, in Sioux Falls or Minnehaha County, and we applied that back to tax relief, that would take it off the general property taxes and we'd put it back on where it belongs. So I just, I just hope that maybe we'll continue to work on this. I think, I really think it's starting to get some leg.
Thank you. Any other comments about that particular item? Ken?
I'll just remind the commission and for those who are here, it was really interesting when we were taking a look and met with our legislative delegation here a couple of weeks ago. And we were taking a look at the growth that we've seen in some of our county costs from 2004 through 2014, and it was in the low 40%, low 40%. When we took a look at our major revenue source, and that which is, of course, property taxes, and that, and how, under the structure of the property tax limitation and what we're allowed for CPI, et cetera, in new growth, and that, in that, and you'll remember, the cumulative total of those allowable state increases was in the low 20s. It's almost half. You know, our revenue source wasn't keeping up. When you take a, when you took a look at the two major revenue sources for the state and the city during that same time period, which is sales tax revenue, and that, those sales tax revenue figures in that time period had increased still in the low 40s, pretty commensurate with, with the kind of expenses we were seeing, but just illustrates how our, our revenues are constricted because they don't get that sales tax, but that the sales tax dollars, you know, they had, they enjoyed that growth in those dollars. So it, it just highlights, again, for everyone, the difficulties we face, not only having these kind of expenses, but the tight controls on the revenues that we get to try to meet them. And that, and it would sure be nice if we were just keeping up at the same rate of growth that it appears that the state and the city was enjoying at that time in their revenues, major revenue sources. And it also highlighted the fact that whenever you hear somebody opting out, it's not the state, and it's not municipalities, and that the ones that opt out are schools and counties because of that tight control of the property tax.
Very true. It was pretty eye-opening to see all those percentages over the years, 10 years, I think, as the comparisons came out to almost the same percentage. But state government and city government use sales tax revenues to balance their budget without any concerns, and we had to opt out twice, refinance bonds, and use some cash reserves to be able to beat our budget. Doesn't seem quite equitable, frankly. Other comments?
I just really want to thank Dick for bringing that up today, and I, I know that people hear that from me all the time, but, you know, the citizens of Minnehaha County are going to have their property taxes go up and go up and up because of the cost of criminal justice in our community. But I'd like to also say that it's been a great year working with all of my fellow commissioners, and I'd sure like to thank the, the employees here at Minnehaha County and the citizens that, I think we had a decent year here, and let's make 2014 better.
Thank you, Jeff. Last week, he was looking at confessions, and this week, he's thanking people. 2014 is going to be unique.
My mom wanted me to be a pastor.
Any other comments, Commissioner Pecos?
I think those three ghosts that visited him last week, he was the only one that made the motion on the, on the compromise of Lena as well.
And in 2014, we can look forward to what his New Year's resolution will be.
That's right. Well, I do want to echo one thing, and we have a great work group up here, and I appreciate working with all of you commissioners, so.
Thank you, John. We have an awesome staff, and Cindy, thank you for everything you've done to keep the five of us in line. And Sarah, we certainly appreciate your support, even as uncomfortable it is personally. We, we are very lucky to have a wonderful group of staff to be able to support our activities. And frankly, with the amount of the time that they put in to help us, it's pretty neat to have happen. Dick?
One other comment. Today will be the last day we're going to see Gerald at that seat, and unless something strange happens, but I want to compliment, he did an excellent job this year of shepherding us through the year, and.
Thank you, Gerald.
I want to thank him.
Thank you.
It's been fun, but I've had a lot of help, so thank you for that. Cindy, good luck next year.
Yeah.
I can guarantee you that she's a shoe-in. With that, we do need to go into exec session for pending litigation and personnel, so if I could have a motion.
That's my motion adjourned to executive for personnel and litigation.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor in going to exec session for personnel and pending litigation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.